It is now 7:00 PM. Good evening, and I will now call to order the regular meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville. We will start with invocation and a pledge of allegiance, and the invocation will be led by Pastor James C. Markham from the Emmanuel Temple CME Church pastor, and that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance which will be led by Captain Mark Taylor.
Thank you for the honor. Let us bow. Lord, we come with a prayer of thanksgiving for all the wonderful things that you have done. We are thankful for the opportunity to live in these United States. We are thankful for life, for liberty, for the pursuit of happiness. We thank you for this beloved community that represents the best in diversity and creativity. We thank you, Lord, for our wonderful mayor, our wonderful city council, and our police department, our fire department, our churches, and our schools. But most of all, we thank you for each other. We pray that you will continue to bless us, keep us, strengthen us, bless our mayor, bless our city council, bless their homes, Lord, and bless their families. We're not ashamed to say we need you and we need your help. May we continue as a community to embody the best of noble ideas in love, unity, brotherhood, sharing, caring, commitment, patience, understanding one another, willing to make sacrifices and to work hard for you, Lord. May we be brave, courageous, creative during these times of economic difficulties, knowing, Lord, that you will help us, lead us, protect us, and guide us to greater heights and greater successes. We say together with the psalmist, "For Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want." And we end with those words, "Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever." To you, O Lord, be the honor, to you be the glory, to you be the majesty and the praise. We do say, "Amen." And amen. God bless you all.
Thank you, Pastor.
By the United States of America, voted for which is my nation, I've got individual proceeding justice for all.
Thank you, Captain. At this time, we have a presentation, and I would like to call upon Mike Page, Director of Government and External Affairs for Verizon.
Well, Mayor, council members, thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. This is the absolute best part of my job, when I get to give away money. We have two organizations that we're going to be giving dollars to tonight. Bears, Benefits, everyone I always have to look at, Assist Recreation and Sports, which I think you're well familiar with, and High Desert Domestic Violence Incorporated. And as you know, each year, many of you have heard this before, Verizon Foundation gives out approximately $100,000, $150,000 in the Victor Valley, and it's just on course as it is each year, and we have tonight about $45,000 we're going to be handing out. At this point, I'd like to bring up John Gargan, and I believe he's got a few others from Bears, and they're going to talk a little bit about the grant, and we'll get a picture taken.
As you all know, the Bears started with Doris Davies, and we've been able to turn it into a nonprofit organization, into a 501(c)(3), and this is a result of doing that, we're able to get these grants. And this pushes us close to over $150,000 that we've been able to raise since we turned this organization into the 501(c)(3). And if we may, I'd like to have Janelle speak in regards to the program that this will be going to.
The money that we received through Verizon, we're going to be using it in addition to our existing program, the After School Emergency Program, which is currently at three elementary school districts, and we hope to add another one next year. Currently, our program, Every Day After School, we have over 100 students, around 100 students that we serve, and we do tutoring and homework help, we do crafts and sporting activities, and we also serve snack. What we're going to use with this money, we're going to add it on to our tutoring and homework time, and with the help of Valerie coordinating, we'll use the Thinkfinity.org website to pull curriculum directly from that website, that the students are going to do activities. We actually already started last week, and they'll do activities from that website every day that they're there. And then also, a portion of it will be towards technology, that we will be able to bring computers to each site, that the students will be able to go to the website directly to do activities. So we're very excited for them.
I may also like to take the time to thank Mike Page and Verizon for all their dedication to the Valley and their commitment to making things better. And Mike is the one that let us know about this grant. He's worked hard with us, helped us, and we look forward to continuing to work with him and have a lasting relationship where we can get more money from him in the future. Thank you.
Mike, thank you on behalf of the city and for supporting a great program. Those after-school programs are very important to the community and to our kids. We thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And that was an education program, and I think everyone knows over the years that Verizon gives a lot towards education and literacy. We also give to healthcare, internet safety, but there's also one area that we've been starting to give money to here in the last years, and it's something, I think, especially through this crisis of foreclosures that we're seeing more and more, and that is domestic violence. And the next check that we're going to have, that we're going to present, is to High Desert Domestic Violence, Inc., and I'd like to have Darrell Eby, who is the executive director, and then the president, Regata Corey, to come up and tell a little bit about the grant. We are giving them $24,500, and Darrell has put together quite an innovative program together, incorporating technology as we do with all of our grants, and so I'd like to share that, or have Darrell share that with you at this point. Oh, we want to do pictures first, sorry.
First, I'd like to thank Verizon for being able to step outside of the box and help us create a program that's not normal. He mentioned that the economy is making a difference, and in our business, it has made a big difference. Last fiscal year, we provided 1,506 shelter nights of service. So far this fiscal year, which we're six months into, we provided 414,97. So we've almost matched our entire last year because there's so much need. It's almost doubled. What we're trying to do, though, is work more towards the prevention side of it, and they say an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So this $24,000 means $392,000 worth of cure in our books, and that coincidentally is about how much the state gives us each year. What we're doing with this is we're starting a program to work with families, to help families that are not quite victims of domestic violence, but they're getting there. And I'm sure many of you have dealt with your own families and your children and the friends of your children, and the way relationships work, and they sometimes get progressively worse if someone doesn't step in and give them that guidance that they need. And there's so many families that don't have the guidance that they need. So what happens is the progression of violence develops, and it gets to the point where the lady is in a shelter and the man is in prison, and that doesn't do any of us any good. So if we can stop that from happening and get there a little bit earlier, give them the counseling and the support that they need, help the man get some counseling on his issues, help the woman get some counseling on her side, and then get the couples together to do the couples counseling, we're hoping that we can prevent some of our future clients from ever becoming clients. And that's difficult to get funding for. People will give us funding for a shelter, they will give us funding to rescue someone, but most people don't want to give us funding to help us prevent something. And I think it's wonderful that Verizon has the vision and the foresight to be able to say, "We need to get into prevention," and that's where they are. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the council very much for giving us a few minutes to make these presentations. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. We now will have the public comment section, and the first item of business on the agendas of all the agencies is what we call the public comment period. Public comment is that opportunity afforded by state law to anyone who wishes to address the city council or in its capacity as the other agencies which have been identified on any subject matter within the area of responsibility or jurisdiction of the city council. Public comment is not something the council can prepare for. The council does not know on any given night who will be here to speak on public comment or what the subject matter will be. If council does not respond to public comment, if you are going to speak at public comment or in any other agenda item, we ask that you fill out one of the white cards there in the foyer and bring it to our city clerk. That will give the council the contact information that we need in case we may need to communicate with you, if necessary, schedule your item for discussion at a future council meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes, and at this time, we will begin with item number one, which is the public comment, and I have Dorothy Miller.
Dorothy Miller, Demond Road, City of Victorville. I have a problem. I got a flag. Isn't that neat? But I don't know why I got a flag. It was stuck in my water meter. Why? We have no idea. Okay, then we got a little thing in the mail today with our water bills. Be winter-ready. It's a little late, isn't it? We've already had pretty much winter. Then the second thing, it was brought up two weeks ago at city council. One of the council members brought up about a person that has no meter, no house, and is getting these bills. Today, comes in the mail again, another bill. It's gone up again. Now, this has got to be taken care of. I think that everybody in this city should stop paying their water bills until these people can get stuff together and get it to the people the way it should have been in the first place. You've had a year and a half to do this. Now, I don't know what the problem is, but it has to be taken care of. The people are really getting fed up, and I can't blame them. I'm just as fed up as the rest of them, and I think they really should, and I'm going to send an article to the paper tomorrow morning and tell them. I feel everybody in the city should stop paying their water bills until we get proper billing, and that is just exactly how I feel. And then, there's another thing that really bothered me, and this is my opinion and what I've heard. We listened to the Steamboat Council meeting when people were there talking about the city. I've heard some things that really bother me. One thing is a couple city council people went there, or one went, one didn't, talking about this. This is not what we should be doing. We should be taking care of our own people here. If somebody wants to go there, let them go. That's their prerogative. And we people here, five of you, let them, let him stand there and say, "You paid him too much money." Why? Why? I listened to that. I listened to his speech. Not good. Not good for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. We now have Carlos Lozada.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council and mayor, my name is Carlos Lozada. I'm from 9550 Firestone Boulevard in Downey. I represent the owners of Seventh and B Street LLC and Marona Enterprises, a developer in LA County. I'm here to request attention to our situation as landlords in the Old Town Special Corridor. We have owned and operated a strip center at the corner of Seventh and B for the past two and a half years. When we first purchased it, we went ahead and invested a large amount of our money into rehabbing this center and make it look marketable for national tenants and local tenants to come in and do their business there. Unfortunately, it seems that after two and a half years of marketing aggressively to national tenants that we have relationship with and other local tenants in LA County and so forth in the general areas, we have had very little results on bringing anybody there due to the conditions of the market, the neighborhood, the whole situation. It seems that the only business that there seems to be a demand for and that are able to sustain in the area are churches or church-related places of worship businesses. We have repeatedly been asked by some of these tenants that have inquired to move into our center to go ahead and rent from us. We go ahead and send them to the city, even though the current code allows for church uses with the granting of the CUP. Planning Department continues to say, "You can apply for it, but we're not going to support it, and we're going to deny it." We understand there is a new vision for the area. There are plans in place to redevelop the area. We understand that. We would love to be a part of that, but the current market conditions do not allow for this to happen at the present time. I know that they're working on revamping the code and rezoning the area and rearranging the uses that could come into these places, but we're not there now, and it could be two more years before this happens. In the meantime, we have an empty center. The tenants we had at the time we purchased the place, regardless of all the work that we did to the place, they're now gone because they couldn't sustain it. Economy is in a downturn, everybody knows that, and it's very hard to attract new businesses and large companies that will survive, like a national tenant, to a place where everything is going away and there is no way of sustaining it. We will ask, we're asked from the commission, and we have asked from the planning department, that they please allow us to at least have one of these tenants apply for a CUP. Give them a term. Say, "Hey, this CUP is only good for two years. It's only good for three years." And then after that, we could enforce it through terms in our leases. They repeatedly say, "No, that's not going to work." They don't want this, and we continue to suffer because of this. More property continues to be foreclosed in the area. Property is going to continue to go blighted. City revenues will continue to go down because values on the properties are not businesses being there. Every time that a business closes, the city loses revenue. So I ask, please, the council to bring attention to this situation. I'll probably be contacting a couple of you to see what we can resolve in this matter. I spoke today to Mr. Bill Webb in the planning department, and again, I was told, "You're free to apply, but it will not be supported." And we don't think this is good for the neighborhood. I mean, what with you? Need changes need to be made, there is a new plan. You want to bring mixed use, you want to bring national tenants, but that's not happening now. And it could be three years before this happens with the economy and the situation, and by the time that all the pieces are in place, it could be as well three years. We are a developer, as I mentioned, in LA County. We have projects in San Bernardino, City of San Bernardino as well. We would love to be a part of this revamping once it happens, but we're not there now. So we please ask for your help on getting something done about this so that we could get at least some tenants into these places, get some business going while this happens, and then we can get to the grand projects that we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll have Mr. Bill Webb. We'll have Mr. Bill Webb get together with you again, and maybe come back to the council with some recommendation or some more information for us to consider. Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the Library Board of Trustees' agenda. Any revisions to the agenda?
No revisions.
You have a consent calendar item?
Vote for approval.
Second.
We now will open up the Southern California, not open up, but we will go into the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority Agenda. Any revisions?
No revisions.
The Southern California, well, this is Councilman Terry. He's the chair of the Southern California Logistics Airport. So Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Cabralas. The only item is item three, which is a request that the existing governance structure of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. This is also a companion item, I believe, number 10 on the city council.
May I ask a question? May I ask why this is on? Is this on because of that one item that was in the consent calendar?
It's on at my request, and that's part of the reason, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Cabralas, if it is acceptable to you and the council, I would propose that we do this in conjunction with number 10 on the council agenda as well, which is their one and same.
That will be in order.
The reason that I ask for this to be on is that although the previous discussions and votes concerning the governance structure were unanimous, it became quite clear through discussions at this dais, as well as comments made in the media, that there was, at least for some infants, that those prior actions were somehow secretive, contrived, and designed to disenfranchise Councilwoman McCackler. There was also expressions from representatives of the county and some of our sister cities that were reading into the city's action some hidden motive to somehow take advantage of our sister cities with regard to tax increment revenues and a redirection of those in a way that would individually benefit the city at their expense. Those were never the intent, those were never ideas behind the actions that were taken in November with regard to the governance structure changes. So to put that stuff to rest once and for all, because the focus of it was on those who supported it, I ask this to be on the agenda tonight, both places, so that the council and the redevelopment agent, excuse me, the Airport Authority can both affirm and declare their intent to keep the governance structure of Southern California Logistics Airport exactly as it has been since its inception and as it is today, and that to put suspicions and concerns to bed, that there be a requirement, that there be no governance changes without the, as it pertains to Southern California Logistics Airport, without the unanimous public vote of the Victorville City Council. That's what it's on here for, and that's my motion.
For a second.
Second. That concludes the business of the Airport Authority, with the exception of item four, which is closed session for the reason enumerated on the agenda.
Victorville Redevelopment Agency Agenda. Any revisions?
No revisions.
We have item number three, which is closed session. And item number four, which is also a closed session item. Victorville Water District Agenda. No revisions?
No revisions.
We have item number three, which is conference with legal counsel. City of Victorville City Council Agenda. Any revisions to the agenda?
Mayor Cabralas, I wish to pull item J off the consent calendar.
Okay, we'll pull item number J, or item J from the consent calendar, and we'll take that separately. Okay, we have item number three, which is public hearing, and this is a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against introduction ordinance number 2233, which establishes speed zones on certain streets. I will now open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against the item can come forward to the podium. Hear none. I'll close the public hearing. Have the clerk read the ordinance.
In ordinance of the City of Victorville establishing speed zones upon certain streets in said city and amending section 12.20.020 of the Victorville Municipal Code entitled "Decrease of State Law Maximum Speed on Various Streets."
Move for further reading and introduction to ordinance 2233.
Motion passes. Item number four, public hearing called to hear arguments for or against notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the SCLA Engine Run-Up Two project. We'll now call the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Hear none. Close the public session, public hearing, and entertain a motion.
Vote for approval. Second.
Item number four, a public hearing called to hear arguments for or against notice of intent to adopt a notice of exemption for the Innovation Way project between Gateway and the Logical Extension of Emerald Road. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward to podium. Hear none. The public hearing is closed. Entertain a motion.
Vote for approval.
We now have the consent calendar, and with the exception of item J, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Move for approval.
We'll now consider item J separately, and this is the request to ratify previously approved city manager's merit increase. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I obviously have some questions on this. This was something that supposedly was approved previously by the city council, partly to me being on here. I'm curious as to why it took so long for it to come back to the council and why at this time we're being asked to approve it when our former city manager has resigned, and I just think that it might be appropriate if we have staff give us an update on why this is coming to us at this time.
And council, the Director of Human Resources, Donna Ramirez, prepared the memorandum regarding the merit increase. I have discussed this matter with her, and if she would come forward and give that presentation to the council, I would appreciate it.
Would you like me to answer questions? Would you like me to give you a brief summary?
Summary would be fine.
Back, I believe, in February of 2008, I prepared the paperwork for the contract of the city manager to submit to council to perform an employee performance evaluation. That item was continued several occasions. It finally was discussed in April of 2008. The mayor, who happened to be Terry Caldwell, advised me the following day of the actions of the council members and asked that I prepare correspondence regarding the merit increase that was approved by the council. At the time, John Roberts had requested At the time, John Roberts had requested the item be held until he could get to council the status on the cost of living adjustment, that we had not done the final budget yet, that would be effective July One of two thousand eight. Also, we were dealing with the change in the employee's schedule, and therefore, he did not want to go forward with any type of merit increase or cost of living adjustment until he could make that presentation to council regarding the employee's package. The Table of Organization, you can see, is on the agenda, I believe it's Item Number Twelve, and therefore, that item was ready in November. It was continued due to several different reasons, I believe. The first one was the election that was on November Fourth, Fifth, I don't have the calendar in front of me. The second meeting, I believe there was going to be, it was not going to be a full council there. The December meeting that the Table of Organization was going to be submitted to, I don't believe there was a full council at that meeting, and so on. The January meeting was continued to the second meeting in January. The Table of Organization was pulled then, based on the status of the employees of the city manager's contract and the interim city manager. So the Table of Organization was finally continued to this meeting. Unfortunately, the complete process was tied together, and that's why it's been continued for as long as it has been.
Questions?
I don't have a question, but it might, it might be helpful. If John Roberts would be willing to waive the confidentiality of the session when we gave him his evaluation, I might be able to shed some additional light on it for Mr. McCaffrey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Roberts, Victorville City Manager. I here by way of confidentiality for the April Fifteenth Closed Session Meeting for consideration of the city manager performance evaluation and potential salary adjustment.
What occurred, Councilman McCaffrey, is that we periodically have a evaluation of the city manager, and it seems like each time we do it, we get further behind. We said we're going to do it every year, and we're lucky if we get it done every year and a half, or sometimes two years. But we did get around to it, we had an evaluation. All five members of the council participated in that evaluation. And the way we do it normally, and the way I recall we did it this time, is that the five of us meet together without the city manager, and we individually share our views as to where he's at, or where he's going, or how we got to wherever we may be. And once we've reached some kind of a consensus in that sense, we then decide what we think is appropriate. We then call the city manager into the closed session, we tell him the good and the bad, and the things that we think that either collectively or individually he needs to hear from us. And we did that in this instance. And at the conclusion, there was a two-part motion by the council, which passed unanimously. One was to grant Mr. Roberts a merit increase, and the other part was to grant a cost of living adjustment. After the council had taken that action, and we called Mr. Roberts in and told him, Mr. Roberts asked the council, and I don't remember the exact words, but in essence, he says, "We're going through this reorganization, we're going through evaluations of where we're going to go, all of the employees of the city, and I think it would be inappropriate or disruptive." I forget exactly the words that he used. "For, for this to be implemented at this point in time, and I would request that the council, you know, hold it in abeyance until we've had a chance to decide what the reorganization issues that I'm working through with my senior staff will be." So, in essence, he, we, we had taken the action. He asked us simply to hold off on implementing it until he could get through his various meetings, which were designed for him to talk to all five hundred-plus employees of the city. So out of respect to him and his request, the council agreed to wait for him to complete that process. To be frank with you, I forgot about it. You know, we went our merry way, but as I, as I have always done, and I believe as Councilman Rothschild has done, whenever we go through that process, we then tell the Director of Human Resources what the action of the council was. And in this case, I did that. I can't remember whether I met with Diana Ramirez that night or the next day, but as a part of my normal process, I dictated a memo to her to go in John's personnel file so that there would be an audit trail of what the council did. And I guess I will take some responsibility for not having a tickle on it so that it would come back up in a few months, because I forgot. And it wasn't until we got to this point that the issue surfaced. But that's kind of the chronology of how it occurred and how we got to where we're at.
If I, if I might, Diana, can I ask you one other question? The, I believe there was some decision made by the council or, or city manager not to extend the cost of living increase to all five hundred-plus employees of the City of Victorville. Was there also no, or action taken to not increase anyone's pay, and then also roll back to the four-hour work, four-hour work week? Was that part of that at the same time, or?
I'm not sure what all of your question is, but regarding the thirty-six-hour work week that we have implemented and the not applying a cost of living adjustment that we have normally applied every year, that's correct. It is part of the Table of Organization, that's, I believe, Item Number Twelve, and therefore, the language in there covers that part of it. So it's also not just the July One of two thousand eight cost of living adjustment that was the employee's waived, but it was additional cost of living adjustments to come up to the ten percent, which was, which is what the reduction from the forty-hour work week to the thirty-six-hour work week would have been.
Okay.
Ryan, what, what, this is, was the cost of living that was, that was waived, but the merit increase is an annual merit increase for all employees?
Absolutely. The merit increase is a totally different program, and no merit increases have been waived for employees that were doing eligible for that. So that program is separate. Is that what your question is?
Yeah, so all the rest of the employees are still getting merit increases?
Those who are eligible for merit increases based on above-standard performance, as long as they are not topped out within their salary range, continue and have continued to receive those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comment? Okay, entertain a motion?
Move for approval to ratify the previous agreement with the city manager.
Second.
Wait a minute. I got it, I got it.
Motion passes. A break in communication. We have Item Number Seven, Request to Adopt Resolution Number Zero Nine Zero Zero Three.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion passes. Number Eight, Request to Adopt Resolution Supporting Federal Appropriation Application for the River Rock Project and the U-Term Program. We have two, Item A and B, Resolution Number Zero Nine Zero Zero Four and Resolution Number Zero Nine Zero Zero Five.
Have we applied for these programs, supporting the River Rock and the U-Term?
I would love to answer the question if I knew, I don't know.
Our Public Works Director?
Amor would be the individual to answer that thing.
This is just a request to go ahead and apply for the program?
Honorable Mayor and council members, yes, this is a request to apply for two thousand ten, two thousand eleven fiscal year. What we, we did apply for it last year. That process is still stuck, they have not done the budget at the federal level. We're applying for the next year now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Entertain a motion?
For approval of both resolutions, Zero Nine Zero Zero Four and Zero Nine Zero Zero Five.
Second. Item Number Nine, Request to Adopt Resolution Number Zero Nine Zero Zero Six. This pertains to authorization to destroy certain records of the city water department, finance department, and city clerk department.
Just to destroy paper, not emails, or?
That's, that's correct. This is in accordance with our adopted records retention schedule.
And this is records that you've had for a long time and under, under the law, you can, yeah?
That's correct.
And get rid of them.
For approval?
Second.
Number Ten, Declaration of Intent to Maintain Existing Governance. Well, we went into that one, that table out there. Eleven, Request to Adopt Resolution Number Zero Eight One Twenty-Nine. And this again has to do with the reorg.
The, the, yeah, Diana, you're right there, okay, I'm looking.
Well, this is a-
The Table of Organization, Mr. Cox. That the item that we're on now?
I think that, well, I, on, on Councilwoman-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the wrong number.
Might I clarify what this one is?
Table of Organization, I'm going to request that that be pulled from the agenda. I guess I should have done that earlier during the time of the agenda amendment, and I'm sorry about that. But that needs to be pulled, and I will absolutely have that on the agenda in two weeks, because there's additional information that is affected by that. And then Diana Ramirez will briefly address this item here.
Correct. If you'll see, there's Item Eleven and there's Item Twelve. The difference between the two is the Item Eleven, which is in front of you, is Resolution Oh Eight Dash One Two Nine. That's the mid-year from two thousand seven, two thousand eight. If we recall what occurred back in July First of two thousand seven, there was no official budget. It was simply a continued budget to carry on as we were conducting business. So there was no Table of Organization to submit, as there was nothing new on it. We then submitted a mid-year budget review to council that was approved and adopted. This resolution is encompassing those changes. Primarily, that was due to the absorption of the two different water districts, Victor Valley Water District and Baldi Mesa Water District. Then in October of two thousand seven, we had a citywide reorganization. Those changes were made, and therefore, this document is simply reflecting what's already been approved by council and all the different changes that occurred based on those two actions.
Looking table, it's hard to talk to you. Thank you.
Is it my understanding that the city manager is requesting that Items Eleven and Twelve be continued till the next regularly scheduled meeting?
Only Twelve, Ms. Caldwell.
Just Twelve?
Just Twelve.
Okay. Entertain a motion for Item Eleven?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, motion passes. We now have a council report, and I'll start here on my right with Councilman Terry Caldwell.
Well, I don't have a report per se, but even though I happen to be opposed to the bailouts and current structure of the stimulus, you know, it's clear that the federal government is going to make billions of dollars available, and some of that money is going to be earmarked for state, county, and city governments. So my question, I guess, to Cox, others, senior staff, is what actions, if any, might the city be contemplating so that we make an appropriate application for those funds? I do have some material that I got from our Director of Public Works, which kind of outlines where money may be focused, and, and I think it's a great starting place. But it seems to me that it's in the best interest of the city to specifically task somebody with the responsibility to move forward, to make sure that if there's going to be stimulus money allocated, that Victorville will get its fair share. And so it's not an action item for tonight, but I would, I would request, I would think it is in the city's best interest that when we have our next regularly scheduled council meeting, that that be an agenda item, and that Mr. Cox decide who on his senior staff would be the appropriate person to be tasked with that responsibility.
Mr. Mr. Cal, Councilman Caldwell, an American council, very good point. We, since, maybe since that information was given to you, we have received extensive email. The list is voluminous in regard to those programs that are qualifying. Amor has, and the city engineer, Assistant City Engineer Doug, are, have met in regard to a lot of these individuals that are required to be shovel-ready. Some years ago, I'm sure you were aware that if there's going to be government money available, particularly federal government money, projects had to be shelf-ready, that that's not sufficient anymore because of the environmental consequences, and therefore, if you complete the environment and put it on the shelf, they expire, and you start over again. And so they have a, to try to avoid the discussion on that, they refer to a shovel-ready meeting, that these can quickly, with some modifications, go, go to construction. The, is apparent, or the guess is, that a lot of the money will go from the federal government to the state government, to transportation agencies, and locals may get some. Amor and, and the team that's working on that will be working very closely with our transportation agency, and of course, we will have projects also, but it's a very lengthy list. They are looking at that, meeting with that, unless he would like to make a presentation now, which I, no, it's no, I'm sorry, can't. It's not on the agenda. At the next council, I meant agenda, that'll be agendized and make a full presentation. And in the meantime, we'll distribute a copy of those programs that are eligible for input from the council, because everyone is moving as quickly as possible, and so we cannot hesitate, and we'll be moving as quickly as we can.
Just as a caveat to that, I would be curious to know the possibilities of stimulus money being available to jumpstart the Nissqali interchange, and/or the city's participation in the Yucaloma Bridge Project and the E Two Twenty. At least as to the first two, I think they perhaps would qualify as being shovel-ready, or close to it, and we're getting no, no real indication of what the priorities are. And so it seems to me that if we have things that are hugely important to us and to the Victor Valley, that we ought to consider that in the list of projects that we might review.
We, we, we hear you, and it'll be at the next council meeting.
Mike?
Just to piggyback a little bit on what Councilman Caldwell said. First of all, I did support, rather tenuously, I might add, the, if you will, for lack of a better term, the bailout of our local auto dealership. But in the last month here, things have changed a little bit in terms of our information. At the time, they collateralized the loan a hundred percent, which protected the taxpayers of this community. But in addition to that, we were still looking at the idea that whether Congress was going to participate in some kind of saving, if you will, of General Motors and Chrysler. And in that month's time, not only did the Congress step in and do that sort of thing to, again, indicate back down the food chain to the dealerships in the local communities that were still going to be around and putting a product out, but also Chrysler is, is dealing with a foreign, one of the foreign car dealers, and, and part of about thirty-five percent, I guess, they're negotiating with right now in terms of that. So we may even have an additional product on that lot. Having said that, reading one of the literatures that Keith Messler had in his office there, it showed thirty-eight hundred brand-new auto dealerships closed last month. Or was that last year? I'm sorry, did I get, last year? Last year. Now, there's a good and a bad to that, I suppose. The good is that if thirty-eight closed and ours is still operating, the competitive edge is enhanced a bit by those dealerships that stay and exist. And of course, the threat is always there, that if some dealerships are closing down, it could happen here as well. So I think a lot of positive things have come out of this rather tenuous act that we did that wouldn't- uh, act that we did that wouldn't, probably you won't find us doing much anymore, but, uh, at that moment in time, it was hard decisions for everybody to make, but mine was, uh, to go ahead and step in and, um, and do what we could to preserve probably one of the most important sources of revenue for the city of Victorville, sales tax. We don't have much in the way of property tax here, uh, so our sales tax is everything to us, and, um, I think things are moving along a lot better now. Keith is monitoring that very carefully, and it's, it's looking like a, a good deal. And we've got the only new car dealerships in the whole Victor Valley. That's a half a million people, basically, that are looking at us when they're looking for their new cars, and I suspect a lot of those folks that were driving down the hill to buy some cars, there's fewer dealerships down there, and more of those, more and more of those people are going to stay back up here and buy those, uh, vehicles, which support our police and fire, and it's the best kind of money. It's our general fund money. So, uh, just a comment off of that aspect, and I do agree that as much as I adore what Congress is doing about this bailout, it would be recalcitrant of anybody on this council or anybody's council to turn their back on programs that are going to be out there and going to be funded, uh, then you step up to the plate again and you say, okay, in spite of that, we're going to, uh, ask for that money for the Nisqually, um, the other three-way interchanges and federal money. So I, I, again, support the staffs working with our lobbyists, uh, to make sure that if there's money available in those programs, that we seek it.
Uh, thank you. Uh, along those lines, just to let the council know, I know that, uh, Mayor Caviarlos and I participated in the federal appropriations meeting with Congressman McCann's, uh, staff, and, uh, expressed some of the things that we'd like to see coming out of, uh, the appropriations bill this next year. Uh, I've also been, um, in constant contact with, uh, city engineer and our public works director, uh, regarding, uh, the stimulus package. Uh, they've kind of been the point, people, uh, inside city hall to address this, make other city department heads aware of, uh, potential possibilities, uh, for funding that they might be able to go after. So, uh, it is high on the list. Uh, Mr. Cox has been a part of several, uh, I think, all of those meetings. So we are aggressively looking at that, and, uh, and hopefully we'll be able to update you more at the next council meeting. And then on a, a lighter note, uh, Dougal Agan's going to be speaking at Rotary next week, so I've been instructed to let you all know that he's going to talk about SCLA and development there, um, and, uh, he might have some interesting things to say in light of the current economic conditions, so if you wish to attend, it's at the Quality Inn in Sweets Green Tree at twelve noon on Tuesday next week.
Good conversion.
No, I don't have anything. I'm just saying, um, not only the car dealerships are hurting, everybody's hurting. All the small businesses in this city are hurting, and a few have walked away from their businesses and, uh, closed the doors, and they're hurting. And it would be great if we could help everybody, so we just, it's hard to pick and choose. Why don't you start on that? That's a slippery slope where they're all going to start coming in looking for help. I might even be here.
Well, I agree, but, you know, unprecedented times, and, and sometimes we need to do things different, uh, and I'm not advocating anything, I'm just saying that we need to look at, at all, you know, everything when, when we're dealing with the current situation. Uh, as far as the stimulus bill is, we, uh, with Jim Cox, our city manager, and the team of public works and engineering and, and all the other people that are involved, uh, I'm sure we're going to get our share, and, uh, but timeliness of the essence, like you mentioned, it, it needs to be done right away, so I guess if council has any more input into what they would like, they can get ahold of Mr. Cox through his team.
With that, uh, the council report is complete, and we will now, Andre, can you articulate the closed session?
The closed sessions are all fully, uh, enumerated and described on the agendas. Um, to the extent there is any reportable action, we will come back into the chambers and report such action. There are, I think, potential litigation items and some real property negotiations. Again, they're all enumerated, the affected parcels are all enumerated on the, uh, agendas.
Now going to closed session?
There were two reportable actions that occurred out of closed session. One was with respect to the item on real estate negotiations. The council unanimously agreed to acquire, uh, parcel number zero-four-six-zero-two-three-one-eighteen from property owner Fernando for a purchase price of eighty thousand dollars. It's a per acre price of fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-five cents. The other reportable action was with respect to real estate negotiations on Victorville Motors. The council determined that it would not proceed with increasing the line of credit by another eight hundred thousand dollars. That vote was unanimous on the council to decline proceeding with an, an additional appropriation of eight hundred thousand dollars.
The meeting is adjourned.